I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Jean Koubish is absent, the rest of the board members are present. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, republic for which it stands, one nation on your guide, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have anyone to speak for the open forum, but I have a statement to read from the board and the district. As you may know, there was an incident that occurred at the volleyball game on Monday, September 16th. A student was wearing a political tee shirt at the game and was asked to turn it inside out so the message could not be seen. This was done in error. The district does not prohibit students from wearing clothes that have political messages, as long as those messages are not vulgar and do not create a disruption. The situation has been corrected. We regret that it happened and steps are being taken to make sure it does not happen again. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Who moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Board committee reports. Anything for policy?
No.
Southwest Metro.
Southwest Metro had its meeting last Tuesday, and at that meeting, we discussed the calendar for the upcoming year. We talked about the programs and the numbers of students in the different programs that Southwest Metro operates, and the numbers are good. In fact, some are getting to the point where they're very, very good, and to the point where they're quite overcrowded maybe. But things are going well at the district, they had a good start of the school year, and it's a good meeting.
Is there any chance they're running out of room, or when you mentioned overcrowding?
No, it's just staffing.
CPAC?
No CPAC meeting.
Community Ed?
No. Wellness, no.
And no early childhood. Superintendent reports.
All right, we had our first ninety minute late start last Thursday, so there was teacher collaboration at each of the schools, and we had a few things we need to get ironed out with transportation, but for a first one, I think overall, it went well. I know the teachers and principals were very appreciative of the ability to do that, and they was very focused and a lot got done, so got quite a few emails on that thanking the board and administration for being able to do that. Also, right now, we got going on Patty Green is a literacy consultant, she's been working with each of the grade levels at all the elementaries with the new Lucy Culkins curriculum, and that's been going great. We've had to get sub outs for that, but it's been going very well. Last Friday, before the football game, we had our Hall of Fame. Four people got inducted, Eric Dorzinski, Amanda Hegg, and Casey Ambrose, and Ron Gunderson, a coach. So Tony Boothy coordinated the entire ceremony along with Julie Schmitz, his assistant, and it was, we had a good group of people there, and it went very, very well. So thanks to Tony and Julie for setting that up, and also congratulations to our four recipients in the Hall of Fame. And then lastly, we've got, just I want the public to know, we'll have, we're working on the calendar, we've got a couple drafts. I've let, given a couple drafts to the teachers' unions, so their executive council is going to look at them, and then hopefully we'll have a survey done, and then we'll look over the calendar drafts at our work session meeting in October, and hopefully we'll go for approval at our business meeting in October. So that's a question we get quite a bit about the calendars, people like to plan ahead, so that's where we're at with that. Well, I got.
Thank you.
I have a question for the late start. Has there been any sort of effort to get the, right, after the late start happened, I got questioned by a lot of people. They, nobody, it seems nobody knew why we had the late starts, a lot of them thought we're still doing the late starts and early outs, and when I explained it to them, then, you know, then they liked it, but I got asked by a lot of people, so I did, I told them, I said I didn't know if there was information out or not.
Yeah, I'll talk to the principals. We sent quite a bit out, though. I mean, we had a couple emails out, we had a letter go out this summer. In fact, we had one after, it got approved last spring, too, so, well, you can never over communicate, so I guess we'll have to take a look at that, but appreciate the feedback on that. But I know the principals were very sensitive about communicating, maybe it's more the what was going on rather than exactly what was taking place, is that what you're saying?
They, almost everybody that I talked to, you know, anybody who asked about it, it's like, well, why are they having a late start now?
Yeah.
And it's quite possible they got the letter in spring and don't remember, but everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
And once I explained it, then everybody was fine with it, but there was a lot of late start.
Okay, I'll share that feedback with the principals. I mean, we've got another one coming up, October, it's going to come up the Thursday before MEA break, so it's a little bit earlier, but we've got another one coming up, and we'll have to work on our communication on that.
All right, thank you. Action and discussion items, talent development presentation.
All right, that's me, so my name is Kate Keno, and I am the Talent Development Facilitator, and, and also my PowerPoint is ready to go. Nope.
You're not the superintendent. I'll probably get replaced there, too, so.
Dogs and hamsters and whatnot are, but that is not what it is. So, what PETS is, it stands for Primary Education Thinking Skills, and it's an enrichment program that we're able to teach all students some higher level thinking skills, but then it also acts as a way for us to identify students who might have higher ability in certain areas. So we started this two years ago with just kindergarten, first and second grade, and then this year, we've added third grade to the mix as well. So as I said, it does have two purposes. The part that I like about it is that we are able to teach these skills to all students. So instead of just picking and choosing based on whether it's test scores or teacher observation, all students have access to these challenging lessons. But then the great part about it is that while I teach, student, the teachers get to observe their students' learning, and so every year, there's at least one teacher who says, oh my gosh, I would have never thought that that would come out of that kid's mouth, because it's not something they see on a regular basis. Or the opposite, where they might have a really high achieving student who they would expect maybe to understand it, and that student doesn't. So it's just really neat to see them in a different light. All of these lessons, this curriculum is research based on both Bloom's taxonomy and Gardner's multiple intelligences. And we usually go through four different types of thinking. So convergent thinking is what much of our day consists of in school. Divergent thinking is by far students' favorite, because they love the fact that there's no wrong answer. Evaluative thinking can be kind of tricky at this age, because, you know, a lot of kids want what they want, and so having to think about other aspects to make their decision is a little bit tricky. And then visual thinking is something that we promote a lot at the elementary, for students to be able to visualize, and yet it's something that's rather difficult, because if you think, you know, like when you close your eyes and try to visualize something, do you actually see the picture, or is it more the kind of thinking about what the picture is? So we do a lot of practice with that. We have these cool little characters that the kids love, and so Dudley the Detective and Sybil the Scientist are kind of the teachers of convergent thinking. So the students get to keep these cards in their classroom, so hopefully their teachers can refer back to them, or the students can refer back to them. My two boys play summer baseball, and every summer, I have a kid who will say, Mrs. Keno, Dudley the Detective, and so they really are remembering it, and every year, I'm in awe how in the fall, when I see them, it's all, it all comes back to them, they hang on to it just because of them. So here are our divergent thinking friends, Isabel the Inventor and Yolanda the Yarn Spinner. We do spend most, many of our lessons, the majority of them, on divergent thinking, and the reason for that is to make sure that students are really starting to problem solve. A lot of them, even when I explain the activity, you know, they'll come up and say, well, can we use markers? And I always say, well, what do you think? Because we're used to, you know, for whether it's time constraints or making sure things run smoothly, we give students very clear direction, and then they follow that direction, and so this just allows them that chance to kind of be their own problem solver and see what they can come up with. So Max Magician, like I said, for visual thinking, we don't do as much, but this one is a really tricky one for the students. And then the evaluative thinking, generally, we do this at the end of the year. Like I said before, part of my role is to teach the lesson and kind of support the teachers with anything they observe, but something we also added this year was a small group component. So the small group lessons are part of the curriculum, and so what we're doing after each whole group lesson is that teachers, through their observation, will be able to submit students' names, those students who may be really excelled at this particular thinking skill, so that then I will take them for a small group thirty minute lesson that will extend on what we've already learned. So our first small group lessons are coming up on Monday. I have no idea how many students teachers will recommend, and so we'll just be flexible and kind of go with it, but I'm excited to add that component this year. So I wanted to just really quick show you kind of what PETS looks like, so I have two really short videos. So this is just an example of some of the projects that we do in the classroom. This one here is our decision making for evaluative thinking, so they have different criteria. And this one here is for kindergartners, we read a book called Not a Box, and so they get a brown square, which is their box, and they get to decide what they want to turn it into. So they say, it's not a box, it's a, and they get to come up with whatever they want. And some kids, it's very logical that they come up with, but some of them, you'll see in a couple slides from now, could be invented. So this one is one called Ten Black Dots, so kind of like the Not a Box, they get to use dot stickers to decide what it is they want to create. This one is some dots and some letters. We got a moose there. This is my favorite, it's not a box, it's a beard on my dad's face. This one is a fire breathing dragon, instead of a box. And of course, the gumball machine. But then I have one other quick video to show you, and this one, I had students kind of tell you what they think about pets, because I can tell you all day that I love it, but this is what they think.
Hi, my name is Lily, and we're going to learn about stuff about pets. Don't give, don't give up, and you'll try stuff new, but don't give up.
Hi, my name is Libby. I like pets because we can be creative.
Hi, my name is Lila, and I like Isabel the Inventor because he fits to invent stuff.
Hi, my name is Jackson.
Hi, my name is Grayson, we like Dudley the Detective.
And learning about clues.
Hi, my name is Andrew, I like the Not a Box, because you can make something that nobody has made before.
Hi, my name is Aiden. I like the Not a Box, because you can make a fort.
Hi, my name is Tate. I like you doing projects when Mrs. Keno comes in, because they're really fun.
Hi, my name is Jerome, and I like the Go Get Test, because it challenges my brain all the way up to the top.
Hi, my name is Beckett, and I like the elimination grid, because it was hard and challenging to pick out.
Hi, my name is Reese, I like to stretch my brain.
So, that's all I have. Any questions that you have?
So how often do you go into their classroom?
Yeah, so for kindergarten, first and second grade, I go in ten times to each classroom this year, and it all depends on the schedule, so it's like a very intricate puzzle. And then third grade, because we're just starting it out this year, I'm going to go in five times to their classroom, just to see, you know, how it fits in with what the teachers are doing, and if it seems to work. Those third graders, though, have had pets since they were first graders, so that's really, I'm really excited about that, too, because we've kind of, we build on it every year, so that'll be fun.
Will it go past third grade, or is that the?
Yeah, so the curriculum only goes through third grade, but we've been doing a lot of thinking about how we can incorporate this into fourth and fifth grade as well at the elementary level, because, like I said, one of the gifts is that teachers get to observe their students' thinking, and that's something that they don't often get to do, because they're in the process of teaching. So seeing their students in a new light is really beneficial to them, so that's something that we would, we would like to add in, hopefully. Time, you know, it's finite.
Are there different projects and problems for them to solve as they progress, or like, do they see the same thing?
Nope, they see the same characters, so those tie throughout, and then the other consistency is the four different types of thinking. But within that, every year is a more challenging activity, and more, we add kind of layers on to it. So in first grade, for example, with Dudley the Detective, we're reading a story and we're looking for clues and trying to solve the mystery before Dudley does, whereas in second grade, they're learning about a logic elimination grid, and so they're able to listen to these stories, but it's really multifaceted, and so they're having to add these thinking components into their grid. And then in third grade, it extends even further, so instead of just a logic elimination grid, they're also adding in maybe different categories and what criteria are used to categorize them, so really adding a layer on every year.
Any other questions? Thank you, it's very interesting.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thanks Kate.
Next item is superintendent goals.
Okay, I'll share you goals for this upcoming year. A few changes compared to last year, and obviously, we had the fitness and aquatic center was one of the goals, which the transition and everything put together there, so that's not one of them. But starting with the academics, goal one, on the MCAs and ACT, that the demonstration of evidence of district growth, and the one consistent variable is state average, so we want to see a percent increase above the state average in math, reading and science. And right now, we're, I think, sixteen points above the state average in science, fifteen percent in math, and eleven percent reading, and our district-wide goal is to get to twenty percent. Just strategies, obviously, you know, important to remind people what our vision is and our purpose, which is our mission, and keep emphasizing our values and goals. Obviously, make decisions that are alignment with those vision, mission, values and goals. A big thing is staff development, I mean, it's about the people, like we always say, we got to continually improve from within, and then really focus on the three big ideas of a professional learning community, and then as I meet with, you know, principals throughout the year, that they have goals and action plans within each of their buildings. The second goal is graduation rate. New Prague High School will be ninety-six percent or higher, and we were just, I think, ninety-six point five percent this past year. And some of the strategies, I mean, our intervention, intervention systems at the high school, and actually, all schools are very important, and also what we got going at the Compass Learning Center to be able to provide staffing and support for those kids is vital. Next one is measured by the annual New Prague Student Survey. We do this every year, students will feel welcome and respected within their school's learning environment. Obviously, through Gospel, we've got leadership and education for students and staff. We have the formation of equity teams throughout the district and throughout the year. Professional development and social emotional learning is a key component of this, and also providing a leadership training session and guest speakers for students at all of our levels. Keep in mind, it's not just at the high school, but it's a K through twelve movement. And goal four is to continue collaborate and develop positive working relationships with all three of our cities that are within our district community. And obviously, just being visible and participate, we've got the state of the city, I'll be attending, I think it's next week, for Alcoa New Market, for example, a lot of meetings and social functions, and connecting with the people within our district that way, and then obviously, working with staff. And finally, goal five, we have our annual parent survey, district survey, and we'll show evidence of increased parent satisfaction, with a majority, I think there's thirty-one statements, and, and obviously, I think as our culture, that we follow the New Prague way, will continue to improve every single year. So those are the goals. Pretty much, except for the one, it's hard, it's hard to measure the one with relationships with the three cities, but most of them are, you know, we have surveys, and we'll be able to measure, or obviously, test or assessments, too, on the academic end. Anyone have any questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Preliminary levy twenty twenty.
Hi, tonight, we need to approve our preliminary levy, and we do have a couple new board members, so I thought I would do a little bit more thorough job this time in explaining the levy process. Tonight, we're asking, I'm asking the board to approve the levy at a maximum level, so you're not going to approve a dollar amount, you're going to approve the maximum level. The reason for this is that MDE is still finalizing calculations, and numbers can go up or down. You know, on September eighth, they run the first levy run, and it changes sometimes quite significantly before the final run in December, so I don't expect it to change significantly, but, but it will change, that I know for sure. And then the final levy is approved after the truth and taxation presentation on December ninth. So the current preliminary levy, and actually, I checked our levy reports this morning, and it actually went down about eight thousand dollars, it's, I say, it changes almost every day as the MDE finalizes numbers, but right now, the current preliminary levy shows an increase of four point nine seven percent, I say I have an extra percent sign in there, so that's really special. Or six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The general fund is increasing twelve point six percent due to a number of factors. The first is increased student count, so a lot of the general fund levies just are based on number of students, and we do grow every single year. The second reason is better equalization aid for voter-approved operating levy, that actually decreased our levy slightly, which is nice, so the legislature did approve an enhancement to the equalization aid for a voter-approved levy, so just slightly lowered the levy there. However, the equalization aid is decreasing pretty significantly for the local optional equity, operating capital, and LTFM. So basically, what MDE does is they calculate our gross revenue, then they apply calculations to say, okay, how much of that is aid, and how much of that is a local levy? And for all of these areas, the local levy increased and the aid decreased. In addition, I just want to point out that the, in the past, there have been two line items. There's been a board-approved operating levy of three hundred dollars per pupil, and there was a local optional levy of four hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil unit, and the last legislative session changed that, so now it's all local, a local optional levy for seven hundred and twenty-four. That's why you see the big change on those two line items on the spreadsheet. The reason for the increase is not because of the change in the type of levy, the reason for the increase is our student counts, as well as the change in the aid versus levy mix. And then OPEB is increasing due to eighteen nineteen costs being higher than seventeen eighteen, that's a levy that we do for our post-employment benefits and severance payments, and that has increased from the prior year. Career tech is increasing due to the ability to levy more programs due to staff licensing changes, and that's, that's a good thing, so a couple of our staff members have gotten variances to their license, licenses, so we're able to, to get more of those costs recouped, because right now, we don't get a lot of our career tech programs' costs recouped. Southwest Metro Intermediate is now levying for safe schools, they have always been levying for LTFM, but they're, this is the first year they've done a safe schools levy, which the legislate, the legislation authorizes them to be able to do that. Our lease costs are increasing slightly from the, from the year before, and the prior year adjustments were negative in the two thousand and nineteen levy, but they're just slightly positive for the twenty twenty levy. The community services levy is decreasing twenty percent, or about ninety thousand dollars. That's mainly due to a prior year adjustment, in the year before, there was a large prior year adjustment for the school-aged childcare levy, and this year, there was a downward adjustment, so there's a, that just makes for a pretty large swing. The amount we're levying from year to year doesn't change that much, but based on the hours, they're always comparing what we levy versus what our actual costs are, and if there's a difference, they do a positive or negative adjustment. And then finally, debt services increasing about a percent and a half, or about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This, again, is due to the decrease in equalization aid and offsetting increase in levy, but this is partially offset by a negative abatement adjustment, which is, which is, which was helpful this year. Now, the estimated tax impact. District-wide, if property values did not change from two thousand and nineteen, the levy would actually decrease an average of nine dollars a year, point five percent. This is because our tax values are increasing, and the number of properties that are being levied are increasing. So if, district-wide, it would be a pretty much of a flat levy. Now, if you look at an average home value in the city of New Prague, which is two hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the two thousand and nineteen levy, if that home value, value did not change from year to year, which only applied to about six or seven properties, but that's kind of comparing apples to apples, the levy would actually decrease about five dollars a year. The majority of the homes, home values increased about, an average of two point three seven percent, or from zero to ten percent, or zero to five percent, and that would cause the taxes to go up about twenty dollars a year. And if the home value increased eight point nine percent, it would go up about eighty-seven dollars a year. And again, this applies to the city of New Prague. Of course, we have lots of townships and, and other cities, but the majority of our properties are within the city of New Prague. So that is the last slide, I would just ask if you have any questions, you asked them, and if not, if you would just approve the levy at the maximum. And if not, if you would just approve the levy at the maximum level.
This is just for the preliminary right now, correct?
Yes, it's just preliminary. You have the final approval December 9th.
I'll make a motion that we approve preliminary for the maximum amount.
Second.
I'll in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Have a resolution for donation for some defibrillators.
I'll entertain a motion at this time to consider the donation from Mayo Clinic Health System for a defibrillator.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the resolution. Whereas Mayo Clinic Health System wishes to donate an A E D device for Trojan Stadium and two portable A E Ds, machines valued at $4,300. Now therefore be resolved by the New Prague Area School Board that they shall accept the donation under no conditions. How do you vote on this Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Danny? Yes, item passes.
Nice donation. Two more resolutions.
Next, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution directing administration to make application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for grant and student participation.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 721 as follows. That the School Board is supportive of the Minnesota State High School League Foundation's mission and goals and hereby directs the Superintendent of Schools and the High School Administration to make application for the Minnesota State High School League Foundation's grant for student participation and submit it prior to the November 1st, 2019 application deadline. How do you vote on this Tammy?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes. And finally, I'll accept a motion for the resolution directing administration to make application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for grant for seminars and training opportunities.
So I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 721 as follows. That the School Board is supportive of the Minnesota State High School League Foundation's mission and goals and hereby directs the Superintendent of Schools and High School Administration to make application for the Minnesota State High School League Foundation's grant for seminars or training opportunities and submit it prior to the February 1st, 2020 application deadline. How do you vote on this Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes.
Finally, we need to go into closed session for the purpose of negotiations.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of negotiations.
Second. I'll in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.